Okay, everyone, we're ready to start. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Harrisburg City Council Legislative Session. Today is Tuesday, April fourteenth, two thousand and fourteen. And call on this meeting to order at six o'clock P. M. Mr. Petrowski, please do the roll call.
Mr. Allen.
Present.
Ms. Bowers.
Present.
Ms. Daniels.
Yeah.
Ms. Green.
Present.
Ms. Madison.
Here.
Mr. Majors. Ms. Williams.
Present. Thank you, Mr. Petrowski. Uh, Mr. Majors, it's excused tonight. He has to be at work. Uh, we will move on with the evocation. Mr. Allen, please.
Certainly, in these unprecedented times of the COVID pandemic, there are so many people uh that we need to keep in our thoughts and prayers, both within our community, the region, the state, our country. So first, let's keep all those who've been afflicted with the virus uh in our thoughts and prayers. Secondly, let's keep our first responders, our essential workers, both in the city and across the region. Let's keep them in our thoughts and prayers. And on a personal note, within our specific community, um, school member Gerald Welch is uh battling the coronavirus right now. And he's currently hospitalized. Um, and I'm sure he can use all of the support that we can provide um as well as the family of Jim Mateo. So if we could just take a few minutes and pause for a moment of silence, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Ms. Allen. Moving on to Pledge Allegiance, Ms. Bowers, please.
President Williams, I'd ask all of my colleagues to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance wherever you're seated. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. Moving on to communications, tonight we we get a status report on COVID nineteen from our fire chief, Brian Enterline. Chief Enterline, are you still there?
Yep.
You're okay. You have the floor.
Very good. You should be able to see me now.
Yes. Good evening. How are you?
Good evening. Doing great. I just uh got back from uh an entire day down with our fire cadets at the York County Fire Academy uh who are all doing very well. Um, I think it's uh good to note that we still have our ten cadets in the academy and the police department is uh still running their academy, even though Hack kinda shut down. We've taken that uh and moved it uh to other locations, both here in City Hall and then down at the York County, so that we have those essential employees ready to go uh on schedule when uh we we were hoping to have them uh out on the street. Uh, I I believe City Council's been receiving uh our daily uh situation reports. I started sending them to you about a week and a half or two weeks ago. And really, that details everything that the that we've been doing from an emergency management standpoint. And you know, since the uh the mayor back on uh March the sixteenth, you know, declared a disaster declaration, that that declaration does a lot. Number one, acknowledges that that we were dealing with a pandemic uh here in the city. And by declaring that disaster, it now gives us the ability for expenditures that we have related specifically to the COVID nineteen pandemic that we'll be able to um through the Stafford Act uh with FEMA uh and the federal government, be able to uh recoup a lot of money uh for those items that we typically wouldn't have had to purchase. Sanitizers and uh N ninety-five masks and and various PPE for workers that typically don't use PPE. Overtime backfill for uh anybody that uh would, you know, be stricken with uh with COVID or potentially stricken with COVID. We had on two incidences, uh two instances, we had police officers that had to be off work for a day or two until the the COVID test came back from uh the uh the patient that they were dealing with. Fortunately, uh none of those patients uh tested positive for for COVID. I thi- I think probably the biggest um uh and and before I get into some of the things that we've been doing, um, the the biggest question that we've seen uh come from our folks, uh folks in in the city as well as the public, uh has been, why don't we know how many folks in in Harrisburg have COVID or how many have tested positive? And why is the Department of Health not sharing that information with us? Uh, and they really held that information close to their uh, you know, really close to them. Uh, up until a few weeks ago, we started learning maybe some more age demographics and things like that, counties uh of where that was. Uh, on Friday, we received a letter from the Department of Health that they're gonna begin releasing the addresses uh of those folks that test positive. Uh, and it's gonna be up to the counties then to provide that information to emergency responders, police, fire, EMS. Uh, there's some caveats with that because there's some non-disclosure agreements. Obviously, there's personal information there, so uh they're they're trying to work through that legally on what that looks like. Uh, and it's not just Dolphin County. It's all sixty-seven of of Pennsylvania's counties that are gonna have to deal with this individually to figure out what's best um for their particular county. And uh, so we're, you know, working actively with uh uh with Dolphin County to figure out what that's gonna look like. Senator DeSanto and Representative Patty Kim have been a huge help uh on pushing some of these things through for us locally. And uh, you know, we're very appreciative of, you know, the work that they've done to ensure that we have the tools that we need to respond uh here in Harrisburg. Uh, you know, as as far as uh what we've been doing, our, you know, our PPE, we have plenty of personal protective equipment uh for police, for fire. Um, we're we're still getting, we have still have a a bunch of that on on order that's coming in just to replenish as we use it up. The uh, we've been sanitizing fire stations, doing things like that. So stuff that we typically didn't do, um, we're we're now doing so that on a on a daily basis, twice a day, they're sanitizing the apparatus, the seats where they ride, uh, the kitchens, the 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 living area, uh the whole nine yards, and it's been working out uh really well. Um, the uh, the city's also been uh at the VMC and then the offices here in City Hall and the Public Safety Building uh are also being taken care of by the uh the folks in in the building maintenance, and they've been doing a phenomenal job. Um, we've been monitoring early on. Uh, I I tasked Nelva Wright, the the health officer, with reaching out to our high-rise uh occupanties in Harrisburg. We have quite a few uh high-rises, obviously, and the elderly population uh was our main concern, and we wanted to make sure that we were protecting them the best that we could. Um, we know that we did have um one fatality uh from COVID in one of our apartment buildings. But we're 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 hoping that with some of the work that we've done, uh, working with the building managers and the plans that they put in place, that uh we're gonna limit that spread. And and it appears that we've been successful uh thus far. Again, we don't know numbers, but um from from what we're being told, we've been fairly successful at that. Uh, we also are working, so some of the things, as we look at this from a planning perspective, and we're dealing with the situation now, but we also gotta look, look ahead to see what what does reopening look like? So think of it as a flood. We know when the water comes up, the things we need to do, and then what does that look like once the water goes down? So we gotta plan for when the water goes down. This, we're we're planning for when does this pandemic end? So some of the things that that we've uh that that Nelva's working on right now are working with um specifically the high-rises in large buildings where the water's been sitting stagnant, where, you know, a building might be used to using twenty, thirty, forty thousand gallons of water a day. Now they're not using any. That that creates some issues uh in the uh American Water Works Association to put out some some information that we're passing along. So that we have our our uh workers protected when they come back to work. So it's it's some of those little things that that sometimes we've we neglect and forget about that we gotta look at uh starting now to make sure that we're ready for when the workforce is ready to come back to to the city. Um, we've been working with uh Homeland, uh the Homeland Center, which is our nursing home in the city. They they have a phenomenal plan in place. Uh, their folks up there have been really on top of it uh to the best of my knowledge. And and I talk with uh with their emergency planner up there two, three times a week. They have no cases. They put a lot of things in place um to ensure that they did not get uh COVID into Homeland Center. And and, you know, as we know, we look at Lancaster County. Uh, once it got into that one uh nursing home, it was, you know, it was pretty shattering statistics down there. Harrisburg Hospital, we've been working closely with them. They're obviously our our provider. Um, we worked very close with Pinnacle to get a testing site set up. We put a request into the federal government uh for fifteen thousand COVID test kits. Um, those still have not been received. However, P- Pinnacle, uh UPMC Pinnacle has been able to procure them uh enough to keep their uh system going. So their one thousand Paxton Street uh location down there, they've been testing a lot of uh, a lot of folks uh down there. Where we'd hoped to been able to do more. Right aid today uh on Lingustown Road, I think it's thirty-six oh seven Lingustown Road. They just announced that they're gonna open a self-testing COVID site where you can sign up for it. Uh, you you essentially get the packet, you go to your car, you self-test yourself, you you turn it back in, and then they test you for COVID. And that's that's really what uh we're looking at from that thirty thousand foot view, is starting to get more people tested to make sure that we we have really flattened the curve as as everybody's been uh discussing. Um, we've been working extremely close. Um, and I I'm happy to report at this point, I I just spoke with the mayor a couple of minutes ago who had talked to Cash. Um, we have no known cases in our homeless population. Uh, and we've been really nurturing our homeless population uh with a lot of supplies. Um, we we put portable toilets out there for them. Uh, we worked with Capital Region Water and got them some running water at a couple of locations off of fire hydrants. And we set up and are currently paying for uh de- sanitation uh at the YMCA on Front Street for the homeless to get showers there uh three times a week. Last week, I think there were about, uh Brian Davis said, around thirty homeless uh men and women showed up between Thursday and Friday uh to take advantage of those showers. So they had, they had been without those shower facilities when the downtown daily bread and and the Y had shut those shower facilities down uh for for about two and a half to three weeks. So it was something that we felt imperative that we needed to get back in um just for their health and safety. And so that we didn't have any other issues creep up on us. We've had no issues uh with fire stations. We're monitoring uh our folks for um psychological needs on the, you know, this has been a big thing. It's all over the news and a lot, we have a lot of downtime. Our uh call volume, uh so just to give you an idea, from from April first to April thirteenth, uh which was yesterday, our call volume uh compared to last year is down thirty-four percent. Uh, and that that's a good thing. And that's that's the exact same thing that the ERs are seeing, the hospitals are seeing a decrease in uh in hospital visits, which has allowed all those rooms and things uh at the hospitals stay open for those COVID patients as they need it. We had uh four members of uh the Fire Bureau we deployed down to Philadelphia with Pennsylvania Task Force One. Uh, they were able to set up uh a drive-through testing site um in the county, in the city of Philadelphia, which is its own county. And that was, that was uh work through the federal government because they became the hotspot for Pennsylvania. Uh, so those guys uh just returned on Saturday after, uh, I think it was a twenty-one day deployment down there. And uh, that's about what I have. Uh, and you know, if you have some questions, uh, you know, we can get down through any questions you have. I just wanted to look real quick at the situation report and see if there's anything that uh obviously, we've been addressing the supply chain issue with PPE. That's that's been a thing, not just for police and fire, but that that was a thing for the the entire country uh when it came to nurses and doctors uh and and things like that. So that's a, that's about where we are. Um, any uh open to any questions that you may have.
Okay. Council members, any questions?
Just one for me, too.
Go ahead.
Uh, so I know they've been talking about on the news statewide about that um that curve and kind of a we finally see, we have finally see, I can talk, we've finally seen statewide the number of increases daily has started to decrease a little bit. Are we, are we noticing that same trend in Dolphin County statistically as well? Hope you have to unmute yourself again.
Yep, I was trying not to, yeah. So uh, what I didn't do when I put these sit reps together, and I probably should have, and maybe I'll do that for tomorrow, is uh is graph that. Go back and try and get those daily numbers and graph it. Uh, fact is, just give me one second. I can pull up Dolphin Counties and tell you what that's been looking like. Uh, cuz Dolphin County actually. So we were, we were tenth of April, we were at a hundred and ninety-nine. Uh, we went to two thirteen, two twenty-nine, two forty, and then two forty-nine. So that number really has, uh, for us as well, has started to level off, which is, which is great news.
And I know there's been some talk among some healthcare leaders across the state about when they feel like there's a peak in Pennsylvania, and there's been some disagreement on that. Is there anything that you're hearing when we think that we could at least peak either either locally or statewide?
So I I've been talking, the the doctors at UPMC Pinnacle are phenomenal um for the city. They they've done a lot of work for us. Um, they're actually shooting a video uh on on some questions that our firefighters had that that we hope to put out to them. So we've been talking with them nearly daily, quite honestly, and they expected that peak to happen this week. Uh, and so when I'm looking at those numbers of what I, what I'm seeing from today's sit rep from Dolphin County, um, we only had an increase of nine cases uh from yesterday and only twenty cases in three days, um, which, you know, really shows that it's leveling off. So we're not seeing that peak. The caution, though, that the doctors have told me is, remember, because we didn't go up in this big, um, I'm backward during the screen, right? We we didn't go up on this big peak, that this thing now draws out. So in instead of having this thing end quicker, it's gonna be a more long drawn out because of flattening the curve. The curve now continues uh and and it it draws out longer than what it would have had we had a huge peak and in a a steep decline.
Right. And that's probably an important point to bring out to members of the community that even though we're seeing perhaps the number of cases not increases dramatically, that the risk is still just as great.
Yeah, a hundred percent. That that is a hundred percent. We still gotta be very cautious and you know, the the big things. And and I think that's been the frustrating thing for um not just those of us here in Harrisburg, uh, not just in Pennsylvania, but across the country. Uh, the doctors agreed on a couple of things early on and then said, now, you know what? Now we're gonna say this. Now, you look at face masks, uh, you know, as an example. Um, and we we don't, um, we don't, you know, we're supporting wearing the face mask in public. Uh, the one thing that that really took off was wearing gloves in public, and that that has caused a from a medical standpoint, uh, is is not what's recommended by uh by the doctors and things like that. Now, again, uh, that that could change, just like things did with the with the face mask. So a lot of the information for us, which is, which is frustrating is, it started out, no, don't do this, and then all of a sudden they're saying, yeah, go ahead and do that. So that that's, that's been the frustrating thing, I think, the whole way across the board.
Those are all the questions I have. Thank you for all the work you're doing. Please convey our thanks to you and your entire team um for kinda staying as engaged. We we appreciate it for sure.
Chief, uh, do they have a breakdown of uh my cities, counties, uh, townships, boroughs here in the Dolphin County area?
No, and that that's the, that is um the information that is held at uh at the Department of Health. So we know the county number, but we don't know the municipality. If you look at the um collar counties around Philadelphia, uh Montgomery County, Chester, uh Montgomery County, Chester County, I can't think of the other one or two, where you see them by municipality, they have their own county health department. And with that, having their own county health department, they are able to legally get that information right from the Department of Health. If the county doesn't have a health department, that county's not eligible to receive that. Now, they're, like I said, uh, early on, they're working on that, and they, there was, there was some guidance come out from the Department of Health on Friday that hopefully is gonna cut that barrier down for us.
Okay, thank you. Council members, any other questions?
I have a quick question.
Okay.
So first, gee, thank you for what you're doing and your entire team. But I know that when they talk post-COVID nineteen, when you flatten the curve, that you potentially could have flare-ups. And a policy that they're looking at adjusting that is the whole uh tracking and isolating. When we're having these teams about long or conversations about long-term planning, um, is that in the conversation or what that would look like if we had to develop some sort of tracking system?
Yeah, I have no idea what that looks like. And that's, that's something that's been too early with the docs that I'm talking with um to discuss what that looks like. I, you know, um, and and I don't wanna sound like I'm bashing on the Department of Health, but um, they haven't been able to handle this pandemic in a very efficient way from the start uh in getting that information out to first responders. Uh, and and so I'm not sure what that looks like going forward. I hope that we've learned some lessons from this. I I think every municipality, every department, um, every county, every state has learned a lot of lessons uh from this pandemic. And I hope that we can put some of that in play for that post uh lowering of the uh flattening of the curve, you know, maybe that that uh August, September timeframe to see what that actually looks like. But um, you know, and I just, and I I neglected to say it um early, but the uh, the the job and the and the situation that our fire, our police, and our EMS have been put in um with having the lack of of information out there uh has has been significant. And and it really is from a psychological standpoint, uh, you know, and we don't think about it uh on a daily basis. And for us, it's it's fairly easy, but there's still that that, you you know, we hear of all the deaths, all the, all the infections. And and our guys are really taking that hard because we're not used to, while we're used to dealing with death and destruction, it, this is something that you can't see, and that that's really affected some of our folks. And and that's why we're trying to monitor and make sure that that we're doing the best that we can for them uh to keep them safe. So they've done a yeoman's job, um, you you know, over these last month and and a couple of weeks on uh on keeping everything together and and staying out there for the public.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, we appreciate all the information that you have given us. You've given us a wealth of information at this point. And thank you for keeping City Council updated on a daily basis. We appreciate all your hard work. And I know with all the recent fires that you have, you're just, you know, running daily. And thank you for, you know, making sure that we are updated uh regarding the coronavirus.
You're welcome. Is is there anything else that uh you need from me, or I I may just?
Any other questions?
Um, yes, I just wanted to um just get clarification on the statement about the homeless. Uh, so are the homeless being tested, or do we just know that they haven't been getting it? Uh, how do we know that?
So um, the homeless through um multiple uh resources have uh healthcare providers out there with them on a weekly basis. And so that that has continued uh not necessarily as often as what it was happening, but uh they've they've started that backup, bringing them into the um into the shelter to get a shower has allowed interaction with those folks again and allowed the healthcare community to interact with them. And starting, I think it's uh tomorrow or Thursday, uh, I think it's Thursday, uh, they're gonna start setting up uh to to do health screenings again uh down under the Mulberry Street Bridge so that the homeless can come there. And that was one of the things that they had in place uh for many months. We haven't tested any of the homeless, but there, nobody that we're aware of currently has shown any signs. Now, that doesn't mean that that there's, there's nobody infected. And we we were actually, uh, from a planning perspective, working with Cash on if we have uh i- if we have somebody that's in a shelter, say the Bethesda Mission um that needs to, that that test positive or needs to be, excuse me, needs to be tested, we would go through uh Dolphin County and put those folks in a hotel room until that test came back or until their isolation ended. So we we have a plan in place to take care of them, uh, much like we do for police and fire. So if a police or or police officer or firefighter in the city of Harrisburg uh contracts COVID and needs to be uh either quarantined or isolated, uh, we'll we'll be using the Hilton Hotel downtown here uh for that quarantine, for that isolation, and then picking up that bill. So the county um at, through the Department of Health at the state level has some hotels across the county set up for the homeless population or those that don't have a place to go back to.
Okay. Any other questions, council members? Thank you, Chief. We appreciate, as I indicated earlier, all the hard work that you and your staff has done.
You're welcome. You're welcome. It's been, it has been a a busy couple of weeks, and uh we we're, we will continue to be here.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, council members, um, Mr. Petrowski, have you received any public comment?
No.
Okay. Moving on, council members, we'll move on to approval of minutes, approval of legislative minutes on March the tenth, two thousand and twenty. Are there any questions, comments, or relations? How about approval of emergency telephone special meeting on March thirtieth, two thousand and twenty? Is there any admissions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing none, the minutes will stand approved. Moving on, council members, to ordinance for first reading, Mr. Petrowski, please read Bill five, two thousand and twenty, enter record.
Yeah, Bill five of two thousand and twenty, it's an ordinance vacating and striking from the official map of the city of Harrisburg, the portion of School Cove Street from eastern side of North Seventh Street to the western side of Norfolk Southern Railroad tracks pursuant to chapter three dash one oh nine of the codified ordinances of the city of Harrisburg.
That will be placed in the Committee of Community and Economic Development. Moving on to ordinance for amendment, this evening, council members, we have none. Moving on to ordinance for final passage, we have none as well. Moving on to resolutions, resolution eighteen, two thousand and twenty. Mr. Petrowski, please read it into record.
Yeah, resolution eighteen of two thousand and twenty, it's a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Wallace, Montgomery, and Associates, L. O. P., for the purpose of completing the State Street Rapid Response Final Design.
Have a motion to suspend the ruse. Have a motion to suspend the ruse to discuss resolution eighteen.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Martin, are you there?
I am. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Uh, great. Uh, thank you for this opportunity, Council President. Um, as you'll recall, uh, the city of Harrisburg, as part of the Second Street Project, uh, entered into a design contract with the Wallace Montgomery team. There is other consultants on that team, Dawwood Engineers, Kittleson, uh, to name two of their sub consultants. Uh, we did a network uh wide study of the city, uh, which resulted in our uh Vision Zero program and our Vision Zero Action Plan. Um, State Street was uh obviously one of the more dangerous streets in the city, the most dangerous street in the city. Uh, we had a number of public meetings, uh, pop-up events and what have you as part of that uh Vision Zero Rapid Response to address the problems on State Street. Unfortunately, State Street's not a city street. It is a state uh state route. Uh, so we had to do some um permitting through PennDOT to make changes to that corridor. Uh, we did submit a a draft highway occupancy permit or initial highway occupancy permit that was rejected. Uh, so for the past, let's say, nine months, we've met with uh PennDOT officials, including the Secretary of Transportation outgoing and the incoming, or the interim secretary, and uh agreed on a configuration for the State Street scored uh corridor, a path forward, if you will. And so we went back to Wallace Montgomery uh to ask them what it would take to bring that project uh from the current status it is through final design. So in front of you is a, is a resolution and a sample contract uh includes the design revisions that were discussed with PennDOT in those various meetings, the highway occupancy permit process, which is the largest expense uh representing about sixty to seventy percent of the total cost. Uh, that'll include traffic signal revisions, things like that, that PennDOT requires as part of the permitting process. There's around five thousand dollars set aside for uh a public meeting, so we can discuss with the uh public again uh the changes that were, you know, we will see on the corridor, and then the advertising of the final bid package.
Okay, when are you looking at having a public meeting, Wayne? Because of this crisis that's going on right now, so.
Yeah, good, great question. So there is a schedule in the draft that had the public meeting uh last week. Obviously, that didn't happen. We're a month behind with, at least a month behind with the notice to proceed. So I will look at probably Ju- end of June. Uh, we may have the highway occupancy permits submitted to PennDOT prior to the public meeting just to get at least the first round, get PennDOT comments back uh before presenting to the public. So I wanna present to the public what is agreed upon and not you know, not have uh too many changes uh between the public meeting and and the final uh build.
So is this a grant that we're receiving to pay for the fifty-seven, the fifty-seven thousand dollars for the contractor? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, yeah. Oh, that's a great question. So the funding for this is actually uh in our budget. It's in uh professional services um engineering budget. It's not in a project budget yet. There, the construction costs have not yet been identified. Um, we will seek grants. Uh, PennDOT has not said they would pay for some of these improvements, but they have not rejected. Uh, we don't have a, an ask right now to them. We don't have a preliminary engineering uh cost estimate for construction costs, but like I said, they di- they didn't say yes, but they didn't say no. So they they left that door open. So we will seek uh funding from PennDOT and other sources of funds. There are also um countywide set-asides through the, of federal funds, through tri-county regional connections. I'm sorry, through HATS, Harrisburg Area Transportation Study that uh could potentially be available. So there, there are sources we will look at for grant funding for construction. You know, based upon the amount.
So you are in conversation with Department of Transportation to try to contribute to this uh redesign of State Street?
Yes, so not not for the design, so the design. Uh, y- yes, so not not for the design, so the design, yeah, for the for the construction, so.
I'm sorry, just.
Yep. So the construction costs, I mean, that's a good question. So what we envision would be uh additional signal timing changes. That's not a big cost item. Um, the big cost items would be some ADA ramps, um bus stop improvements, uh redoing the curbing, because we would be narrowing the road, right? So that that that's the change that needed to be done. We've made several changes, interim changes that we could make. Better signage, lighting should be uh is about a month away. We're waiting for some lighting, uh the uh seventy seventy-two lighting fixtures to um come in. Um, so those changes we can make, but really narrowing that road and reducing that crossing distance for the pedestrians is really what needs to be done. And that's what finally everyone agrees to. That's what the public had known right away. And uh so so those will be the costs. Um, we'd looked at temporary curbing, things like that. Uh, it turns out some of those items, uh although they would deploy faster, they're actually more expensive than concrete curb. So it looks like we'll probably be going back to um, you know, the brick and mortar, concrete rolled curbs.
I agree that we need to re- redesign um State Street. Uh, it is a uh a speed demon uh gateway to the city of Harrisburg. Uh, but I am concerned about the fact that it is the state's street. Commonwealth of Pennsylvania owns that street, and they are responsible in that. I would like to see them uh be inclusive in, you know, adding to the cost.
I I wholeheartedly agree.
Council members, any questions? Ms. Daniels, anything?
Yes, I'm Wayne. So for whatever reason, I don't have that resolution on me. Can you go over just the specifications of the contract, like the value of it? Um, how long it's supposed to be? It's I don't, it's not on your end. The files I have, I don't seem to, they don't seem to be in the files I have. So if you could just summarize the specs of the contract.
So so the total contract is fifty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, there's basically uh four components to it. There'd be the design revisions uh to the, you know, the the concepts that were developed during the um public engagement portion and things like that. Uh, there would be the highway occupancy permit, so that would be requesting changes to a state highway um by a municipality, similar to like a private developer might request like a driveway entrance or changes, uh maybe a signal, something like that. So that's the major cost. That's about thirty thousand dollars for that permitting process. So we would submit electronically plans to PennDOT studies, things that they would require, including the traffic signal, timing revisions. Uh, then there'd be a public, uh, there's some budget for public meeting around five thousand, and then the planned advertisement uh bid package. So we'd put together the um construction drawings and the bid package together for bidding on by contractors. Um, so that that's basically the scope, the timeline, schedule that's uh in there. Again, this will have to be revised, but it 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 based a notice to proceed on March sixteenth date, which is obviously pushed back a month or or so, and then advertising in July of uh twenty twenty. So if we push that back, we're looking at um, you know, maybe an August, September timeframe. Some of the work can be done in the winter months, concrete work, things like that. Um, but that that that's basically the timeline. It includes uh two uh highway occupancy permit submissions, and then the public meeting that we mentioned was originally scheduled for April sixth that we'll try to um, you know, push to uh midsummer, uh, you know, assuming everything, we're allowed to meet again, right?
Any other questions? Mr. Mattson? Okay, Wayne, I do have another question. So um are we promoting WBE and MBE inclusive in this contract? Will they be following the city of Harrisburg guidelines?
So this uh this contract was originally a task of the Second Street Contract where they did have the uh DB participation. Dawood Engineering was their uh DB sub. I I will have to ask, because I don't have a breakdown on this particular task of uh of who, you know, if they're using any of those subs on this particular task. But they have exceeded, on the Second Street task as a whole, they have exceeded the DB participation with uh Dawood Engineering being that DB sub. But on this particular task, I believe most, most, if not all, this work was going to be Wallace Montgomery self-performing.
Okay. Any other questions, council members? Okay, Mr. Martin, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, may I have a motion to go back into the, do the uh legislative business?
The moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Put that back into the session. Mr. Petrowski? Please call the vote for resolution eighteen, two thousand twenty.
I want the vote for resolution eighteen of twenty twenty. Mr. Allot?
You you need a motion. You don't, you don't have a motion on the, on the resolution yet. You just had a back-in-session motion.
Um, yeah, okay, I'm sorry. Have a motion to uh approve resolution eighteen, two thousand twenty?
Moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments on the motion? Please call the vote.
Mr. Allot?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors, Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution eighteen passes.
Thank you, Mr. Petrowski. Moving on to resolution nineteen, two thousand twenty.
Resolution nineteen of twenty twenty, it's a resolution approving the lot consolidation and preliminary final land development plan submitted by Jonathan Hudson to construct the three-story, one hundred and twenty-nine thousand square foot office building with onsite parking at the property to be known as twenty-five twenty-five North Seventh Street.
That will be placed in Economic Development Committee, moving on to resolution twenty of two thousand twenty.
Resolution twenty of twenty twenty is of resolution approving the revised lot consolidation and preliminary final land development plan submitted by Dr. Eric Dar on behalf of Harrisburg University to construct a new eleven-story institutional building consisting of university classrooms and a service unit.
That also will be placed in Economic Development Committee, moving on to resolution twenty-one.
Resolution twenty-one of twenty twenty, it's a resolution granting an additional extension of time for the approval of the subdivision and land development plan for twenty-two sixteen Brookwood Street and the five sixteen Melrose Street, known as Brookwood Commons, until July first, twenty twenty, to allow the Harrisburg Planning Commission to review and make recommendations on the plan.
And that also will be placed in Economic Development Committee. Moving on to resolution twenty-two.
Resolution twenty-two of twenty twenty, it's a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to enter into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Health for the purpose of receiving up to five hundred forty thousand two hundred fifty dollars to fund lead hazard control activities within the city of Harrisburg.
That will be placed in Budget and Finance Committee. Moving on to resolution twenty-three.
Resolution twenty-three of twenty twenty is a resolution approving the lot consolidation and preliminary final land development plan submitted by Jamie and Harvey to construct four attached single-family townhomes along the six hundred block of Woodbine Street.
That will be placed in Economic Development Committee as well. Moving on to resolution twenty-four.
Resolution twenty-four of twenty twenty is a resolution approving the lot consolidation and subdivision plan submitted by Randy Good to consolidate and subdivide the properties at eight thirty-three and one oh oh one Paxton Street and nine seventeen South Front Street.
And that also will be placed in Economic Development Committee. Moving on to resolution twenty-five.
Resolution twenty-five of twenty twenty, it's a resolution of the City Council of the City of Harrisburg to ratify and confirm the mayoral declaration of public health COVID nineteen disaster emergency March sixteen, twenty twenty, and related emergency measures to convey the appreciation, support of council, or extraordinary efforts of city staff and the entire Harrisburg community in their perseverance in responding to the this global pandemic and approving the continuation of the declared state of emergency for the city's ongoing efforts to confront this public health crisis.
Council members, any questions or comments on resolution twenty-five? Here and now, please call the vote.
Mr. Allot?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors, Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-five passes.
Thank you. Moving on to resolution twenty-six.
Resolution twenty-six of twenty twenty is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Harrisburg authorizing and endorsing a real estate tax deferment of interest and penalties otherwise due on real estate taxes levied in the city of Harrisburg upon land and improvements on tax parcels within the city.
Council members, any questions or comments? Here and now, please call the vote.
Mr. Allot?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
And Majors, Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-six passes.
Moving on to old business, council members, is there any old business that you would like to discuss at this point? Moving on to new business, is there any new business that you would like to bring? Okay, Mr. Allot?
Uh, I just wanted to get an update in time for our next meeting. Um, I'm understanding when it comes to uh the budgetary impact we might be facing as a result of what's happening uh to our city's budget, that we may not see that due to just kind of when tax revenues come in. Um, but have we anticipated where any potential revenue shortfalls might exist? Um, and are we, do we have any planning or discussion how we're going to deal with those budgetary, potential budgetary shortfalls? Not the after an answer right now, but in time for perhaps our next meeting, uh maybe a good update and overview of what we're facing would be helpful.
Mr. Weber, did you hear what Mr. uh Allot requests us?
Did.
Okay, thank you. And you will have that to us before the next meeting? And I think we're gonna have another meeting next week because we're gonna have to um look at all the correspondence that came into Economic Development Committee. I think that some of that is time-sensitive. Am I correct, Mr. Grover?
Uh, some of it is, some of it is not. Uh, I believe we provided the drop dead dates on them by statute with each of the uh cover memos. Um, there, there were two other issues uh that were raised. I had spoken earlier today with you about it. One was there's an basically an emergency small business fund between Impact Harrisburg and the city, which we would hope to workshop next week uh at council from the, taking money from the sitting revolving loan fund and providing uh cash assistance to uh small businesses in a program that's being developed. Uh, and then moving it forward for a vote on the last Tuesday of April. Uh, Impact Harrisburg boards approved five hundred thousand dollars. The request is the city do the same, which the mayor is agreeable to. Uh, and then move that so there's actually money going out to these small businesses as lifelines. Uh, hopefully by the very beginning of May. So there's been a lot of work going into those programs, but we would need to have council review it and make uh some determinations about whether they're satisfied with the program uh so that they can move forward uh for assistance to small businesses.
Can you give us an update, Mr. Weber, on what's in that revolving loan fund?
In terms of?
No, just give us the amount in the city revolving loan fund.
About two point one million dollars.
Okay. I want, I know you, we've already spoken about that, but I want to make sure that council members are aware of what's in that particular fund. So when would you like to have a meeting, Mr. Grover?
The request is to workshop it before, even before the introduction formally of the of the resolution. Have the documents to the council ahead of next Tuesday's meeting and workshop it at that session. Otherwise, it'll push into mid-May.
Okay.
And some of these places are really, you know, their doors are closed right now. They can't pay their people. They can't pay their vendors.
Okay. Uh, well, I was uh in agreement with you to have another meeting next Tuesday and to look at uh addressing some of the issues that's in the Economic Development Committee. You have six, Mr. Mattson. And also, um, there's another issue that you wanted to talk about, Mr. Grover?
Uh, I think we had talked earlier and today, uh, I had talked to Mr. Woolley and yourself. Uh, and I think we're gonna have a conference call on this, but on um the uh, I understand that the April, the March meeting, there was an announcement there'd be a work session on the public uh grant programs through DBHD. Uh, I'm not sure the full scope of of the, what the workshop you're, we're looking for is. But uh, the promise, I think publicly by the council was to be a workshop shop and a vote tonight. That's obviously pushed back. Um, but if we're coordinating a work session, we we need to have sort of a scope of what the council uh needs to see and hear, whether that's the CDVG, whether that's ESG, the home, a combination of those. Uh, that's, that's still the money from last October that's going out the door.
I want to get that funding out, right, because that the other money has already came in for two thousand twenty. And so, and some of these agencies are in dire need of that funding.
So I understand it. So that would, that that was the request. Uh, I think we're to be just working offline, trying to figure out how to structure that. I talked to, I got Mark today. We'd ask Lily Williams to to come on and and speak. Uh, but I will note there was a presentation, which you referenced earlier in this meeting back in March tenth, I think, by Mr. Woolley.
Yes.
And I think uh Ms. Williams participated in that, Lily Williams. So I, if there's additional information, or if it's, you want to hear from additional people, because particularly because of this format, we need to work through that mechanically. That is, so who who would council be looking to hear from?
Okay. And myself and you, uh, myself and um Mr. Woolley and and you will meet sometime next week or be on a phone conference call to decide when we, what we're going to do as far as the allocation of those fundings.
Okay.
Council members, we already have a copy from the last meeting in March tenth and also in March uh thirtieth. Uh, Mr. Woolley gave you the exact totals that he was going to allocate to the sub recipients. Please look at that information, and if there's any changes that you would like to make, please have that information. Give that information or send it by email to Mr. Petrowski before the next week, before the next meeting next Tuesday. Um, Mr. Grover, did you find out that there was a time that HUD is going to allow for, allow for us to give this funding out before we lose it? Because it, within the next four months, it's going to be the end of the funding period.
I I don't think that anyone can rationally predict where anything is going to go while things are closed down. Even the programs they would do and pay for can't happen for facilities that aren't allowed to be open right now. So the contractors are barred from doing the work. So, you know, I don't, I don't know what the solution will be. I would suspect in good faith, people will come up with solutions to make sure the money gets properly spent. Uh, and that the contracts will get extended to make that happen.
I just don't want to see the money from the CDVG funding go back to the federal government.
As, as, as long as we all do our part, that should not happen.
Okay, because it's been almost, what, three or six months that we've been going back and forth with this and the changeover of personnel in that department. We'd like to see that money be allocated to the sub recipients and make sure that they will be able to provide services for our residents here in the city of Harrisburg.
I I believe the council's been provided that data by Mr. Woolley and Ms. Williams.
Okay, Mr. Ms. Daniels? Ms. Daniels, okay. Any other questions, council members? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Grover.
You're welcome.
There's, there's no additional business. I pass for a motion to adjourn, please?
The moved.
You have a second? Hello?